I'd like to call this order, this meeting, the Lancaster County Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome each and everyone here today to our meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation given by Councilmember Alan Blackman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come and do the county's business, be with each council member here, give us the wisdom and knowledge necessary to do what's best for the citizens of Lancaster County. And Lord, we thank you for this Christmas season, and we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. Lord, please forgive us of our many sins. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, we'll move on down to approval of our agenda. And I have a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second, anybody's second.
Second.
All right, got a motion second, everybody in favor. Roll call. Approved.
Charlie McGriff.
Approved.
Billy Mosteller.
Approved.
Jose Luis.
Approved.
Alan Blackman.
Approved.
Brian Carnes.
Approved.
Okay, unanimous, okay. We'll move on into citizens' comments. No one's signed up, so we'll move on into our business, move into our discussion action items. The first one, 6A American Rescue Plan Act update and Barnett Building Proposal. Mr. Marstall.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we have the sheriff, I think, first on the agenda tonight under 6A, so the sheriffial can come up and talk about a grant that he's applying for for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
It got switched on me.
I'm sorry, Daniel?
No problem. I was calling the one I had.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate this opportunity, and I'm really here just to make you aware of what we're doing. We put in for a grant a good while back for Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. We want to create a council here in Lancaster County where all the players involved in the court system, which will include myself, the police chief, solicitor, public defender, our jail administrator, probation and parole, counseling services, mental health, we asking for a member of this council to be on that committee, along with a member from the city council. We'll have our chief magistrate, our resident circuit judge, along with one representative or one community member from each area of the county. This, this committee will be tasked with coming up with different solutions, different tactics to make our criminal justice system more efficient. I, I think you've all heard about the concern sometimes about the number of cases that are going through the courts. Our job will be to create new strategies to make the court system more efficient. Not throwing anybody under the bus, but, but if there's an issue with maybe the sheriff's office, the PD, the, the public defender, solicitor, whoever it may be, the judge, the magistrate, whatever we can do differently to move more cases in a quicker amount of time, that's what we're wanting to do. And, and I'd just like for a member of this council to put somebody on the committee, and I would ask this council also to choose the community members that would serve on this council. This would be a one-year term with the understanding we could ask him to, to serve another term.
Sounds good. I believe it'd be a good, good program, you know, to get implemented.
Yeah, I, I think so. It's a, it's a hundred percent grant. We got it for three years, roughly $300,000. It will hire a, a administrator for the grant. Charleston already, already has this in place, and we have gone down there to see how it operates, what it's done for them, and we certainly want to bring it back here and put it in the good.
Mr. Chair, could I say?
Go ahead.
I think it's a great idea, Sheriff. When I read about it, I, I really got excited because this is what we do as far as getting things done, the partnership, having everybody at the table and come to some sort of consensus about how to move forward. I think it's a great idea. Now, I want the program coordinator's job.
That's fine with me.
Well, I mean, this is a hundred percent, there's no grant match or anything. It's a hundred percent grant.
Yes, a hundred percent.
And so we did, Mr. Sheriff, the timeline on this, we said, we're waiting any day to hear back that you might be awarded this, is that right? We could hear back?
It's already been awarded, they just haven't cut the money loose yet. We, we know we got it, they just got to cut the money loose.
So did the grant start October 1? This is a federal grant. If it's October 1, they haven't really got the word out yet. They should, slow.
That's good. Mr. Marstall, we just move as far as this information.
Right, and then when the money's released, we'll come back to you to ask for an appointment. So we'll put that on your future agenda for an appointment.
Good. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. All right. Now we'll move into the American Rescue Plan update and Barnett Building Proposal. Mr. Marstall.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Before we move into this agenda item, excuse me, I want to take the opportunity to welcome our new budget director and introduce you to Jamie Pavuznak, who's here with us today. She just started with us on Monday, filling some big shoes, but she's got a great background for us. She is a Lancaster County resident. She lives in the Indianland area, but she did her undergrad at Elon. She's had a good tenure with Mecklenburg County, but as well as other towns in North Carolina, including Hillsborough, Stallings, and Marvin. And so she's done both budget work and CFO work. And so we're glad to have her as addition to our new staff to help guide us in our budget process. The agenda item, the last one, I think, today is about our budget process and budget calendar. So we'll go through that, but I want to make sure, take the opportunity to introduce you to Jamie.
Glad to welcome you to, to Lancaster County. You know, you live in Lancaster County, but to come and work for us, that's great. Glad to have you on the team, and we fixing to really jump into the budget, so you come in just the right time, so.
You did, and we are a great council. Great. No problem.
Most of us are.
Very modest council.
So, Mr. Secretary and council member says, we have on the agenda item before you, we have a PowerPoint as one of the ongoing things I know you want to be updated as you've reaffirmed with me lately about status and different things we have going on, and clearly one of them is the use of our federal funds for the ARPA program or COVID funds. And so we're going to have our deputy county administrator, Ms. Snowden, walk through the PowerPoint presentation. I'll do some sharing of the presentation with her, but we're going to highlight the projects or some of the active projects today. You have a whole list in front of you that we'll go through on a different spreadsheet here about what's been completed, what's in progress, what's still to come, and then how much money is still remaining to be allocated, so we can talk about that in context of some of our previous conversations this week about some things we may want to consider funding. And I'll ask Ms. Snowden to take it from here.
Secretary Mosteller and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to present. Over the course of the next three months, every quarter, we will be bringing you an ARPA update, but please keep in mind that this is a point in time because we have various projects. So just to recap, as you know, Lancaster County was allotted more than $19 million. $10 million of the ARPA allocation is authorized for general government expenditures to date. We have approved 33 projects. The council has approved 33 projects of $15.8 million. The remaining $3.1 million must be obligated via purchase orders or contracts by December 31st of 2024 and completely expended by December 31st of 2026. And of course, we must, and we want to incorporate contingency funds in the event of unforeseen cost overages or change orders. So I am going to run through the projects. We have some specific projects that we want to show you, but these will show you, give you an idea of the project status. So I don't know if you want me to read everyone, because you did have that in your packet, but we can go, certainly go through it.
Yeah, I'll go through them and just.
Okay.
Body good.
All right, and hopefully you can see the, the screen. The administration building, security upgrades, information technology, this was a 63.7 million, $63.7 million, or $63,757 project. It was completed. The fiber internet capability of the airport, 21,700, that's been completed. The vendor software procurement, 35,97622, that's been completed. The camera system for 911 communications, that's a $67,000 project that has been completed. The GIS server replace, replacement, 43,115, that has been completed. The badge controller for admin, that's in process, and that is a $34,855 project. Recreation parking lot reclamation, that is in process, and that is a $1.1 million project. We have two truck replacements for the fire department that is in process. That's 460,000. They have been ordered. The storage warehouse for emergency management, that is pending, that is over $705,000. The camera upgrade for the sheriff's campus, 178,000, that has been completed. And the evidence building for the sheriff's department, that is in process, and as a matter of fact, the project manager is coordinating with the sheriff's project manager for the, for the new detention center, since they're on the same site. Replacement vehicles for the sheriff, that is in process. The majority of those vehicles have been ordered. Premium pay for multiple departments, that was completed, and as you know, that was a $1.3 million impact. Masks for the EMS and coroner, that has been completed, 377,000. Glass barriers for multiple departments completed, $69,546. Temporary housing, LACH, completed, 334,0213. HVAC unit replacement, multiple departments, that has been completed. That is a $1.3 million project. The decontamination shower for the sheriff, that is in progress, 93,000. Wall construction, sheriff in progress, 14,000. AV upgrades to council chambers and information technology and administration, that was 74,864, and that has been completed. Remote, remote workstations, information technology for 47,754, that's been completed. The countywide network overhaul, that is in process, and that has over a $2 million amount allocated. Enhanced bandwidth and remote operations, information technology in the sheriff, that has been completed, that has been on the sheriff's campus, that is a 657,375 allocation. Digital recording indexing, register of deeds and assessor, 125,000, that is in process. The building expansion for the coroner, that is in process, and that is a 1.7 or 1.8 million, nearly 1.8 million project, and that should be going out to bid in early January. So that is in process. Wastewater project, Hannah Creek, Lake City, I'm not sure exactly what the acronym is, but I'm sure it's water.
Water sewer district funding that we provided for them to do that project.
So that is pending. That is a $500,000 allocation. EMS headquarters bay construction, that is in process, 514,529. The public defender's office, the addition there, it's in process and nearly 90% complete, and that came in under budget, so we'll be talking about that. Premium pay two, Pleasant Valley Fire, that's completed, 48,000. Personal protection equipment, PPE supplies, risk management, 50,000, completed. Nonprofit community programs, I know that Ms. McGriff is interested in this. This is pending, 100,000, and the administrator and I have spoken about coming up with a process, and we'll be doing that before the end of the year. The council of aging, completed, 18,000. EMS mass transit bus, 975,000, that is being outfitted right now. And so a total of all of the allocation committed and council-approved projects to date is 15.8, 15.861189, so 15.8 million. So just, I want to go through, and please, Mr. Marstall, Administrator Marstall, if you would like to actually jump in, but want to go through some of the, the project's updates for you, some of the high vis, high visibility ones.
Just before we go. Next step. So in our spreadsheet, we've got, we're at 10,730, and you're at 15,861. Is that how much cost over?
No, no, no. The spreadsheet that was in your information packet is that we have to file each project by a category of federal funds, and so in that first section is we can only do $10 million in projects related to general government, that they don't have a COVID connection. And so I do know, there are different codes in there that we've got to work back through our finance, but really that was for our internal tracking for the COVID-19 definition. So like when we talk about the mass transit bus, that doesn't go over general government expenses. It has a separate category for COVID-related. So the premium pay has a different category, so they're not quite accurate, but that doesn't reflect the, the connection between what's in the spreadsheet and the total dollar amount aren't correlated.
Councilman Blackman, if we move forward, it will make more sense.
Maybe, yeah.
It will maybe, perhaps.
There'll be a reason behind it.
It will make more sense. Well, it's just the way that the finance team is actually tracking it. They're tracking what was set aside and what hasn't yet been approved, and so we're going to go through, and at the end, I promise, we're going to tell you how much money we have left, because that's what it seems like you're tracking.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Before we proceed, I had a couple of questions.
All right, go ahead.
One was on the 300, and I guess it was $64,000 that we contributed for temporary housing, all right, $334,000. Do we know where that project is? I know we have had people that have questioned it in the past about, you know, have they moved forward with trying to get some permanent housing in place for a temporary shelter? And we have put a considerable amount out there, so I'd like to know an update on where that project is.
I'll be glad to address that, Ms. Carnes. It's Mr. Marstall. The initial update on that is that they have secured property, and so they do have renovations going on that property. I do not know if they have occupants yet, so I'll get that update for you. My impression is they're still, we're going to have some permits, but I know they have even like temporary bathrooms and showers and things to go with it, but they have property secured, and they're doing outfits to the facility, but we don't have occupancy.
So we have given them our money.
Yes, we've made our contribution.
The other question I had, the other question I had was on the coroner's expense. I, I know that has not gone out for bid yet, but I feel pretty, I feel very strongly that we don't need, if, if the bid comes back over budget, we don't need to be cutting things out, we just need to find the money to be able to, to fund that project the way it needs to be funded.
And we have that as one of the upcoming projects to highlight, so we'll be glad to talk about that, because you're right, we don't know where the bids will come in at, but we have some thoughts for that.
Okay, so here's a, a brief overview of the public defender's office addition. The project added six new offices and a restroom to the third floor of the courthouse. The wall finishes are underway, and the ceiling grid has been installed, and the HVAC work is ready for inspection. $212 is the cost per square foot. Based on $265,000, this project has come in significantly under budget. You all originally allocated 500,000, and it came in at 265,000.
Wow, that's, that's. Exactly. What are we doing with that renovation again?
There are, the project added six new offices and a restroom to the third floor to make more space for the public defender.
Okay, specifically for the public defender?
Defender, correct.
But it came in significantly under budget.
You know, we, I don't know what we discussed, but the solicitor discussed the fact that he was needing more space. Will any of those offices be available to the solicitor?
No. And that conversation's been had with the clerk to court, and he does not foresee any more room available for expansion other than the courtroom and judges' chambers. So I, we have good context for other conversations, talk about space needs in the county.
That courtroom, courtroom and judges' chambers, is that, it's not, I mean, it's not been.
It's not been funded.
Funded yet.
It's, it's accounted space accounted on the third floor, but no timeline or funding has been identified or allocated for that.
One more question. I know in order to have courtrooms, you've got to have a judge assigned to this area. Is this a possibility, if we do the renovation on that, that the state will assign us a new judge? It's no sense in renovating it if we're not going to get another judge.
That's why there's no plan right now to activate a renovation plan, because it's not anticipated that we're getting a extra judge. I do know that, I just spoke with the solicitor today, that we're getting a new administrative judge, I believe, starting in January or February, that will be taking some dockets and may make an assessment in the next six months that could lead to more conversation about the space use.
All right, thank you. The coroner's building expansion, this project will expand the interior and exterior of the facility, create additional parking, and a Sallyport for body transport vehicles. The project, as I stated earlier, will go out to bid during early January. Architectural design has been reviewed and accepted, and it is estimated to cost nearly 1.8 million dollars.
And to add to that conversation, and to Mr. Carnes's point, is that between the coroner, she's been actively involved with our project manager, the architect firm, and another advising firm, they've already done some value engineering, kind of looking at what are the key components they're adding, an addition on the back, and even a Sallyport that's enclosed. They believe initial estimates from the architect are still within the 1.7, again, but in this environment of bidding and things for construction, we'll actually see what bids come back at. But initially, we feel like, from what we hear from the architect and others, that it's reasonable. The coroner has signed off on the key components, that she's getting what she's identified, and so we'll just see where we get back in January.
Sounds good.
The sheriff's evidence building is also another high-profile project. The preliminary design is over 7,000 square feet, 7,031.11. The project is 1.44 million, and $204.80 is the project cost per square foot for this. Project design and engineering is underway, and this would create a new evidence storage facility for the sheriff's criminal cases to include space for vehicles, weapons, and other miscellaneous items taken at various crime scenes. And the project manager is working with the sheriff's project management team to address egress, land disturbance permits, trying to be as efficient as possible.
You know, we said potential bid dates to go out on that. Do we have a spring for bids on that? Do we know if there's a spring?
We're hoping, because of course the clock is ticking, but I don't want to misstate. So we can definitely bring that back. EMS transport bus, this is the purchase of a, an EMS transport bus. It has been purchased and is being outfitted, and as a growing county, this purchase will assist EMS in serving our school-aged youth, as well as our senior population, as well as the public during mass critical incidents. The total project cost is estimated to be $975,000. Okay, project update, the EMS headquarters bay construction, this is the construction of a new building for EMS ambulances in the garage. The cost per square foot, feet is 156, or square foot is 156, and the total project cost is 514,529. Foundation grading permit has been received, and rough grading has been completed for the building's pad. Footing work is also underway, so this actually shows you some of the work that's underway. The next project is the parking lot reclamation project for the Springdale Park. This project includes the reclamation and expansion of the existing parking lots at the Springdale Recreation Center. Construction on this project is set to begin in the summer of 2024. Design plans are 60% complete. The county has received approval from South Carolina DEHEC and is awaiting a federal approval permit. The total project cost is 1.1 million.
And as we wrap up, those are kind of the key products underway right now, so you kind of know the status. I do want to highlight and make sure that we're transparent why we have the anticipated cost, again, for this one in particular, the 1.1 million, all the costs have reflected that, but on this one, we're going to come back to you before we finalize the construction on this, because the recreation center is county land, the parking lot and ball fields are currently city land, and so we want to make sure that we have a clear understanding with the city about how they're going to maintain the parking lot going forward. We'll maintain the park land, but there'll be an intergovernmental agreement that we've been talking about before we make this investment, but overall, I also want to make sure we're clear, some of these project costs, like we said, we know we've had some escalations in some. We still think on this one, we'll be in 1.1 million, but as we've talked about these dollars since we've completed them, we have the exact amount on here. We still know some are in progress, some things may fluctuate a few thousand. For instance, the EMS bus, that should be the right dollar amount, but we've been seeing with some of the fire trucks when they come back and put on final decals and other things, sometimes it may go up a few more thousand. We did see that. Make sure we're transparent with the EMS bays, that cost did go up a little bit for the footings and the drainage work at the EMS site. So we do have our budget amounts, we work with those, but we do have a few things where you'll see some of the prices flux and even go down, as we said, with the public defenders. But based upon the exact numbers we know of what the projects have been completed to what remains now, a mis- have been completed, to what remains now, a misnoting can cover where we're at for remaining funds, unless you have any questions from what those projects were.
Anybody got any questions?
Okay, so where we are now to date. So right now, these are projects that we listed and that maybe were a little bit confusing, because we placed dollar values there, but these certainly need council's approval or recommend approval to move forward. So there's first, the potential land or building acquisition that needs council's approval. There is 1.1 million that remains there. These have not been allocated. The Barnett Building renovation, which would place various departments there, that would be $1 million. And the new and expanded facility for voter registration and elections, that's 1 million. So the total of unallocated projects right now is 3.1 million. So that's what remains. And I will turn this over to Mr. Marstall to talk about a proposal regarding the Barnett Building.
Yeah, so looking that we have 3.1 million, and again, we said right from the very beginning, not knowing if coroner's office bids come in higher, or even the storage facility, evidence storage facility for the sheriff, if for some reason that comes in higher, we still want to leave a cushion, probably of at least 600,000, just to have a cushion. And again, we're within our timeline. We have a year for which we have to at least account for these funds, either through a contract or purchase order. So we have a year to finalize, see where those bids come in. But one thing we've talked about from early on, when we first looked at the money received, is can we use this opportunity for federal funds to renovate the Barnett Building? Because right now, the Barnett Building is being occupied by the state Public Health Department, as well as our procurement department. We have Parks and Recreation Administration. We have our nurse practitioner in there, and there is still vacant space. And when we were, when we acquired the property, there's still a lot of unused space in there. It's very chopped up by offices, because it used to be a medical complex. And so as you've asked in the past, is let's come back with a plan on how we might want to renovate that. And so looking at our needs, we've identified on here that we can house our entire information technology department out there on the second floor. Also, we still need to think about room, about Clemson Cooperative Extension. Now that we've done that property deal with the Arts Council to get the historic jail, historic library, there's still that Clemson Extension Building. If council still wants to find a home for those employees at some point in time, we basically have four years' agreement for them to keep in that building. But also looking at potential, we said solicitor's office, they have some growing needs. Would that be a potential place for temporary, unless we find some other space for them? But the solicitor, I think, has spoken to some of you, and he's come to us before, about needing some future office space. So given our current available space, it would be the Barnett Building. And also, we're looking about, we do not have computer lab, training lab, within the county for different training. We have six kind of cubicles that we use at EMS, but if we want to do some big training, and even thinking ahead, if we want to do our new ERP system, where we have a new financial system, think about future training. But also, at the Barnett Building, there is an open room that is used for community, that we can enhance that for community meeting space on the first floor. So thinking about those needs, IT, computer lab extension, solicitor, and the community room enhancement, we initially said a million dollars. But to have IT at that building, we need a backup generator for IT, and we'd also need to do some server redundancy, putting some new servers out there. So what now was initially a million dollars 12 months ago, wild guess, could be 2 million to incorporate a generator and some of the backup needs that we need for a facility to house our IT function. So I would like to come back to you at a future meeting in January to initiate a full architectural study, to do those, to help us get an understanding of what an actual price tag would be, to incorporate all those departments, functions, and that will give us a better estimate of really, are we looking at 1 million or 2 million? But that would be a future conversation in January that I wanted to tee up with you today, because we've talked about Barnett, and we've had it on the list for a while now, so it's time to move, if you're interested in that. But then also, that's in context of if we only have 3.1 million dollars left.
Unallocated.
Unallocated. That we also have identified some other needs, as we talked about, for elections, and some other facilities we've talked about, and then maybe even a different facility to help relieve some of the pressures for the solicitor's office.
No, you said 3.1 million dollars unallocated, but then 600,000 contingency, that's going to bring it down to 2.5 unallocated. So you're wanting to design that Barnett Building to accommodate all of those offices that you mentioned. Now, all of them, I know they're state offices, some that we are mandated to do anyway. What about Clemson Extension? Is that a state mandated office? I know it's not, because I used to work for them, so.
It is not mandated, but there is not, through research, there is not one county yet that does not provide support for office location for Clemson. It is an agreement from-
That question is going to be asked of us.
Agreed, and we're ready for it.
I want to make sure we understand that it's not a state mandated office.
How long are they going to be able to stay in where they're at now?
Our current agreement with the Arts Council for their facility is that they can stay there for four years.
Four years, okay.
Unless they find a new home, or we find a new home between now and then, but we're on the clock.
They can stay there at four if they need to, okay.
So, and I, to your point about truly, we have 2.5. Five. It's 2.5 million. Again, we have some things that we'll shake out in terms of the fleet facility, as we think about that going forward, thinking about maybe some other office options for the solicitor's office. Those will come out. I know you've heard even some future requests for fire location and space. We do have on here 700,000 allocated for fire, emergency management, emergency management, storage. As we talk about some of their land that they're looking at, we could use those funds in a different way than doing the initial storage for emergency management. So that gives us a little bit more play in terms of allocated project, but nothing's been commenced.
I haven't been over to the Barnett Building in a while, so evidently, it's a lot of space available from the ones that you named that we want to house in that building.
Correct, yeah, there's a lot of space in there. It's just very chopped up. It needs to basically be demolition, demoed inside, but then you have to come back. And if you're serving an IT with a server function, you have to have some other safeguards in place for the structure.
But you know, we've had issues with the Barnett Building, with the roof, and all kinds of issues with that old building, so.
Not of late, so I mean, we've had roof addressed and repaired, and so structurally.
Once you start talking about demolition, my recollection is it's pretty chopped up, and it pretty much got just tear the guts out and rebuild it.
There's a lot of that, yes. And a lot of the walls have the chicken wire plaster on some of it, too. So it's got some unique, because it has additions to it as well. So it's been added on to, I think it has three additions or three components. So there's a lot to work on, that's why.
Has some elevators in it, if I remember right?
There's two elevators in there, and one.
One wasn't working.
One does not work, and we're not required to have two. We're required to have one. So we're not suggesting as part of this renovation to utilize that second one, because that alone could be a $600,000 cost.
Could we get some money maybe from the state to help with that elevator for disabilities?
We can always ask, yeah.
You know, we used to get money back from the state when we would renovate a state building. They would give us a percentage back. Veronica, do you know what I'm talking about? Do, are we still-
Get a percentage back over 20 years?
Are we still requesting that money, or is that money still available?
That would be for DSS.
Just DSS?
Yes.
Okay.
And they've changed the formula. It used to be 60-something percent, but it's kind of different now. But that's only for DSS.
Okay.
So we'll take any more questions, but what I want to do is leave this conversation knowing that we're going to have some significant movement or clearer requests for you, I think, within the next 30 days. Again, related to the alternate fleet, maybe an alternate solicitor's idea, and then having the cost on those that will help us think about how much we might be able to utilize from the ARPA funds, and then how we think about Barnett. And then that will still color my recommendation to see about having architectural work done to start evaluating the Barnett Building. So I'll be back to you. I'll look to come back to you in January, when I have a bit more clarity on some of these other moving parts.
Thank you, council.
We appreciate the status update. That really helped me, knowing what, where everything's at on being completed or still. I really, that was great. I appreciate that presentation.
We've got a lot going on.
We do.
When we have that presentation in January, I'd like to kind of see a total picture, again, on an Excel spreadsheet, just showing what was the approved amounts, what are the proposed or anticipated or estimated amounts as of today, how much has actually been used, and then the total amount, so we can see what's remaining, what's been used up, what's anticipated. Because as we add some of these additional costs, it's hard to kind of keep track of a total picture, so it'd be nice to have it all in one Excel spreadsheet.
Does anybody else got any comments before we move on? Mr. Carnes, you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move on down now to the discussion of a proposed ordinance regarding remending ordinance 2022-1796 regarding the state budget proviso and capital project sales tax. Jenny, Ms. Dupont, or Ms. How-
I'll take that one.
Randy, you got it?
Okay. Yes. We had a conversation with council before, but wanted to highlight that back in March of 2022, council adopted amendment to utilize the excess capital project sales tax II funds for projects that were on the capital project sales tax III list. That was authorized by the state budget proviso, and the legislature adopted that to utilize those funds. And so when we did the ordinance to do that, there was some uncertainty of whether or not the language was directing funds to the Pettis Greenway and the USCL pedestrian project from both the excess in the capital project sales tax II, and again, from the capital project sales tax III funds. So trying to understand that. And then as well as, we advanced some road projects that were on the capital project sales tax III. We advanced them with excess funds on II, and are currently working on some of those projects now. So what we, based upon council conversation, is we've attached to your agenda today an amending ordinance that would clarify that the Pettis Greenway would only receive 1.5 million between capital project sales tax II excess and capital project sales tax III. So they would only get 1.5 million total between those two. The same way with the USCL pedestrian plan, we highlight that the fund shall be in lieu of, and not in addition to, the funds available. That's the terminology, to make sure that we're crystal clear for everyone, for both the Greenway and the USCL pedestrian. But then we also highlight that the road projects are in addition, not in lieu of, that we will do 13 million, we're doing 9 million right now, then we'll do another 13 million out of the capital project sales tax III funds. So we wanted to make sure that that is still where council is. I understand the lack of clarity from the first ordinance. So we have Ms. Heiser here. I'd like to ask Ms. Heiser to come forward. She helped us as we were drafting this language. If she wants to highlight any clarifying language that we are proposing?
Thank y'all for letting me be here. This is towards the end of the year. This actually may be the last time I'm in Lancaster with y'all this year, and just wanted to thank y'all for letting us work with y'all. The installment purchase revenue bond transaction ended up humming. I mean, it was, it was better than Mr. Newark thought the last time he was here. So I want to congratulate y'all on that. Also want to tell Ms. Veronica how much I've enjoyed working with her. We're, we're close to that two-decade mark. I think, Ms. McGriff, you were probably the only person on council when I first started working with the county. So just a little nostalgia. I missed your event yesterday afternoon, but knew I would be here. If y'all would take a look, please, if you don't mind, at the attachment that you have to your agenda. The real changes are in J, Section 1J, where it says why we're amending this ordinance, which is because there are some questions that came up. Then Section 4, which Mr. Marstall just pointed out, where we tried to be very clear about which projects were going to get only the amount specified in the proviso, so that they wouldn't be sort of double-funded. And that primarily was your, were the two Greenway projects, one for the Pettis Greenway, and the pedestrian improvement for USC Lancaster. We also made it clear that for the other categories, the amounts were in addition to and not in lieu of. And finally, in talking with your county attorney, we decided to send this to y'all as an amended and restated ordinance. We could have had a shorter ordinance that just changed those things I just talked about, but in that case, you have to have two documents to have the whole picture. And so we thought that having an amended and restated was just easier going forward, so you don't need two different ordinances to know what county council voted on. You ready for comments?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
There's no votes today, but this will help inform if we bring this ordinance, amending ordinance, to your January 9th meet, I believe. So yeah, if we can make changes to it today or move forward as it's presented.
Well, I'm glad it's cleared up, because I certainly don't even understand why it was ever a misunderstanding, because we never discuss in addition to. I mean, we never, that never came up in the conversation. We never talked about funding those two projects, USC Lancaster and Lindsey Pettis Greenway, twice. I don't know where that came from, but I know folks have talked to me about it, and about the fact that it was misunderstood. And as to me, it was the same with them, that it would be double-funded. And I think, you know, I think we've been really good with the Lindsey Pettis Greenway. We funded them out of the recreational money, and we also funded them out of the capital campaign money. So I think we have been very generous with the Greenway. So I'm glad we got it cleared up.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah. First of all, if you look at the proviso, well, let's look at the ordinance that was originally passed, and I'm not so sure I understand, what does Lancaster County Detention Center Top Priority on Capital Sales Tax List III mean? Why is that even attached to this ordinance?
Because we use funds, excess, let me make sure I'm right, we use excess funds towards the detention center.
And two, just number two, excess funds.
Yeah.
Detention Center.
We had 14 million, I think, rolled up.
We did.
To me, there's a little bit of confusion. We called your second sales tax the first reimposed tax, and then we're now really working with your, like, soon-to-be-third reimposed. So I might suggest going forward that you have sales tax I that did the courthouse, sales tax II that did a bunch of things, this sales tax, the current sales taxes, your detention center and roads. And so that, just in terms of terminology, going forward, that we make it more clear, because I always have to sort of-
Okay, so let's discuss it in one, two, and three, in those terms. So we're using excess II funds to go toward the detention center?
Correct.
And so was the detention center on the II list that was approved by the voters?
No.
Then what authority do we have to give to the detention center, then?
State law. State law says that when you have completed your projects from a sales tax, in this case, sales tax II, then- a sales tax, in this case, sales tax two, then the money is supposed to flow to the first project on your next sales tax, assuming that your sales tax is re-imposed, which happened here. It's actually, the proviso is what changed state law, the proviso allowed y'all to use some of those sales tax II funds for roads, and if my history is, if my memory is correct, and that might be far enough in the past, and not too, too close to now that I can remember, but I know that, that Mr. Willis thought that we, you'd be able to use excess number two sales tax for roads, but the, the way the state statute read, it would really go to the detention center.
So if 17,000 went from two to three to the detention center, then the detention center only gets, that'd be 17,000, that'd be 13,000, 13 million more?
The law doesn't say that it's net of, it's just a contribution to, and that's what we're trying to clarify here in this ordinance.
Okay. Of course, I don't know if anybody here's done their research on this, but I know that I will be very disappointed if we don't fund USCL or the Greenway, because when you read this ordinance, that's exactly what it says, and that's exactly what I voted on, it's very clear, and if you talk to Steve Willis, he would tell you that was the intent.
Well, if, if it was Steve's intent, it certainly wasn't council's intent, and I think our intent is the one that counts, but wait a minute, when we were discussing this, Alan, why didn't at that point you bring that up, when we agreed to move these two projects up and fund them up, because we knew how long it would take-
Because this ordinance-
Hold on, to get the money, why didn't you not bring that up at that point, to that, to say, will we be double dipping?
Because that was never brought up, that, that, this says we're going to fund those two projects out of two, it doesn't say in lieu of, and that's what I voted on, and that's what's going to be the big disappointment to me, if you read, if, I asked y'all to read this ordinance, and I don't think anybody here's read it since our last meeting on it, and, but if you read it, we were very specific, and if you can't, if I as a council member can't tell a constituent, what I voted on is going to hold up, we're going to change it the next time, because somebody wants higher priorities on something else, maybe they, because they didn't read it.
But my constituents are telling me that, that as a taxpayer, they've done enough, and if we do another referendum, and they're included in that, that's a different thing, but folks are telling me that our money should be spent on our county projects, and we've got county projects that will need that money. I am on the, on the education foundation board for USC Lancaster, would do anything, I love Lindsey Pettis Greenway, have help with that, and, and raise some money for that, but this is not what we intended.
Well, just read the proviso, and tell me-
You're not reading, you're not reading the same.
Now, listen, it's my turn to talk now, okay? And talk to your representative, and see what he says about the intent when this whole thing started rolling, if you talk to Steve Willis-
I have.
If you talk to Brandon, they'll both tell you-
I talked to Brandon, I have.
There was, there were funds for both two and for three.
We, it was in there, Alan, but remember, we could have waited to give them that money, but we decided that we would upfront that money, because we had an overage, that was the intent. Now, if the intent was to fund them ahead of time, and then fund them again, that was not my intent, that-
That was, that was mine, as I read the ordinance.
Not my intent, I don't know about the rest of council, but my constituents are saying that we're spending their tax dollars, we're doubled, we're giving them double the money. If it was left up to me, Alan, I would, but that's not our money to spend like that.
I think Terry's got a comment.
I got, I got a couple of comments, one, I want a legal opinion on this, and number two, I did talk to Brandon Newton, and he did say that it was their intent to double dip, he made that very clear. My point was, they did not make that clear-
To us.
-to us, in the beginning. I don't have a problem with doing it if it's done upfront and clear, but the way it's been done right now, it doesn't sit good with me, because it sounds like we're getting manipulated, we got manipulated.
Absolutely.
Terry, we didn't get manipulated, because-
I know it's there, it's in there, it's written, but that's, nobody brought it up.
Well, that's where we need to read our materials before we have a meeting.
And we do need to read our materials, I agree with that.
Okay, I read it, and I voted on this right here, and for us to change it now is just impardonable.
But when I read it, that was not my understanding, we, you know, your, your understanding and my understanding is different.
I can't help if y'all don't read it.
And I wish that if, if that was the intent, Brandon should have came here, Steve should have came here, to say that was our intent. My intent is not to fund it in this pot of money, now, if we do it again, and we put them in there, fine, but this here is not fair, it's not fair to our taxpayers, to ask them to pay again, no.
I think we need to just let everybody comment, start.
Yeah, I'd just like to ask a clarifying question, does the proviso supersede state law?
The proviso is state law for that fiscal year.
So it would supersede whatever the state law that you had mentioned earlier that said everything would roll over to the next capital sales tax?
For that fiscal year.
For that fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Okay, so the proviso governs?
Correct.
So then the proviso, if it governs, doesn't give any of the surplus funds to the detention center?
The proviso is permissive, it's not mandatory, this was something that they, your representatives put into the budget, sort of very, the end of, of the, of the legislative session, so it's, 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 you may use excess, you are not required to, so I don't think there's any problem with, under the proviso, you had permission to use excess number two sales tax for roads. Without the proviso, you would not, you would have been able to move the excess funds to the number three sales tax in order, so what, what the proviso lets you do was use extra money for roads, so you've got the amount that was in, in the, on the ballot question, plus money's coming in from, from sales tax two.
So that leads to the next clarifying question, so if that proviso did not exist, would the ordinance that followed apply?
The ordinance number 20, 22-1796?
Yes.
The, the piece of-
The one that referenced the-
That moves, the, the, the part of that ordinance that moves money into roads, probably, I don't ever want to say yes or no, because I haven't exactly thought through that.
We're going to give you the legal answer, it depends.
Um, I, um-
Because I guess the-
Let me say, we were pretty convinced that in order to use extra money for roads, for extra, extra money for roads, so the money's extra to sales tax, and extra roads, you needed an exception from the then-current state law, and that's what that proviso did.
Correct, so that's the part where I'm confused with the recollection right now, because if we did not understand that, that ordinance would not exist, and that proviso would not have been necessary.
The, all I can say is, is that the, the proviso did not require-
Correct, I, I, it's, it's a permissive, it's not a mandatory, I, I get that.
Theoretically, I think that the council in '22 could have said, we're going to advance monies left over from two, to get the Greenway done, and USC Lancaster done, we're going to help, we're going to advance those monies, and intend or not intend to give them two bites of the apple. So I think that's where the understanding or misunderstanding comes from, and I, I was not part of that process.
Yeah, I guess, as, as someone who wasn't part of that process, or on council when that happened, it, I'm just confused why we would go through that full process if that wasn't the intent, and that wasn't the understanding, it just doesn't make logical sense why we would have these additional documents in these conversations.
Well, you know, I thought we were doing a great deed to the university and Greenway about moving the, giving them the money ahead of time, so they could do the project, it was never discussed, and never my intent, that we're going to give you this pot of money here, and guess what, on down the road, we're going to give you another pot of money, you know, that was never the intent, that was never discussed, and I'm sure if we had have discussed it, we wouldn't have done it, I know I wouldn't have.
I think to Mr. Luis, is part of your question is, we had to stipulate before the end of capital project sales tax II, that we're going to exercise the proviso for roads, and I thought that the conversation then, too, was, the voters did say they wanted funding for the Greenway and for the pedestrian in three, so the amount, so it made sense that we were still meeting the voters' wishes in three, but we're just advancing it from the two funds, and we had to state that, but we had to state-
Violating the state law that says you must do it in order.
Not with the proviso, the proviso is what the permission was, that's why the proviso said we had to do it before two expired, is why we had to do the proviso.
We gave money, because we, we had to get that in there before the, the year ended, but it didn't say that we would not do, we would not do what the voters voted on for three, the voters voted on these two projects being funded at, at the end of the, life of the collection of the tax, so, but, so how can you take that out of the order, and put it in here, and say, now we're not going to honor what the voters voted on?
I think we did, I think we have honored what the, what the voters, if we put this back out to the voters-
Not according to state law.
They will not double dip, I'm almost certain.
The law says you've got to follow the order.
No.
So if you've got to follow the order, it's still there, waiting to be paid at the end of the collection of the tax.
No, Alan, I'm sorry, you, you have, you read that the way you wanted to read.
No, I'm not, I'm reading it-
Ms. Heiser, can you-
Who wrote this ordinance, anyway?
Mr. DeBois.
Mr. DeBois.
I think Mr. DeBois, yeah.
That's convenient.
I, I think that the, the fact that the proviso covers roads, pedestrian improvements, pedestrian transportation, allows you to, in fact, take them out of order, I mean, it's, it's like, the law says you do them in order, and the proviso said, except for here, you can do them now, if they, if they meet these, these, this category, so that's what I think, but again, I have no basis to, to know what y'all were, what the intent of council was, and, and I'm glad we were able to bring this to y'all for your discussion, I'm not sure I could be with y'all on your, your first meeting in January, but I think y'all might have just a humdinger of a conversation about it.
I have another question, when was the meeting where this was discussed? I'd like to kind of, yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to go through the minutes.
I'd like to know what the timeframe is, when the, when the first ordinance was done, I also want to know when the sales tax commission met and prioritized their list of projects.
It, it appears that the, the ordinance from 2022 was read in February of '22, second reading March, of, March 14 of '22, March 28 was third reading, and the public hearing was reading March 14 of '22.
So when did the tax, why did that tax commission, sales tax commission meet?
They made their recommendation to county council at least eight months, I believe, before that, to get it on the ballot.
Before, before this ordinance, before this ordinance, okay, that's right, that's it, I just want to clarify that, 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 because I think they might have, well, I know if I was, I can only speak for me, if I was on that tax commission, and I knew that there was going to be more money, I might not have voted to put it on there again.
Well, I guess we, we just have to go with what was on the ballot, and so the 14 projects-
I understand that, but my, and I, and I know, Alan, you, we might not, but my recollection is, there was not a discussion on double dipping for the Greenway or the UCL, but I do understand that Mr. Newton and Steve Willis, that was their intent.
Beyond, beyond the intent, what is in the document?
Hey, hallelujah, brother, I mean, I'm sorry if y'all don't read your material, but I know what I voted on.
Alan, that was done separately from when we voted to move it up, now, if we had have known that we were going to vote it up, I'm sure that proviso wouldn't have read like that, but wait a minute-
This is the ordinance, this ordinance you voted on.
But wait a minute, we did that, and we moved forward, the conversation when we decided to put USC Lancaster and Elizabeth Pettis Greenway, that, you at that point should have said, wait a minute, you were the first one of, we voted unanimously to do that, so this discussion should have been the night that we voted to move those projects ahead. To me, it's like, this conversation has been separate from our county session, somebody's been talking about this, what they call the parking lot discussion, because I never was in that discussion, about moving these projects ahead, and putting them, putting them ahead again, I mean, funding them again, that's not even reasonable.
That's what you voted on.
I don't care, Alan, it's not reasonable, that was voted at a different time.
No, it wasn't, that's the time we did it.
I'd like to see what Mr. Carr, if he's got any comments, Brian, you have anything?
I, I did have discussions with Brandon about the roads, I, I don't recall having specific discussions with him about the Greenway and the USCL money, I mean, we did talk about USCL being in, in the capital project sales tax III, and when we voted on the proviso, had we already voted prior to that on capital project sales tax III? I believe we had, because we, that was put in place before- The, the vote-
Correct, we did, yeah.
The vote on, on your third sales tax was in 2020, to go into effect upon the end of your second sales tax, so there was a, a time elapsed between the, the vote in November 2020, and the actual expiration of your tax in close to '24, I guess, or '23, so that was the, it was during that time, and that either the, I, I, I don't remember, I'm not sure whether the state law changed, I think that there may have been earlier versions of state law that, that gave you more flexibility in using excess sales taxes, but I know that the law, at the time your third sales tax was, was approved, gave us concern that you would not be able to use extra money for roads, and I guess the pedestrian greenways, and, and those came in as transportation projects, and I, I don't know whether y'all intended to treat roads differently than, than pedestrian and Greenway, but that, that's totally y'all's, y'all's issue.
But, Mr. Chair, I also talked to Brandon, and I told Brandon that if his intent and, and Steve's intent was that, they should have certainly shared it with council, and I told him that I was not in favor of it, and he said he understood that if it was not our intent, and I think that should have been discussed when we did it, because it was not, I don't think we, we can go along with what was Brandon's intent and Steve's intent, because it's council who does the voting and makes the decisions.
I've got a couple of comments, too, I, me personally, I think, you know, council's intention was to move the pecking order of the Greenway and stuff, and some of the roads ahead of schedule, because if they, if the, the Greenway and, and the USCL thing, project hadn't have been done, those projects wouldn't be done yet now, they would be way down the line, they behind all the EMS stations, they were way down the list, so those projects, so that's why I was in favor, I, I voted to move it back, to get them in where they could go ahead and do it, I didn't vote to do it, pay, give them twice, money twice, I, that was my intentions, just to move them in order. Be honest with you, from the get-go, to start with, I wanted all the money that we had left over to go toward the detention center, because at the time, I think the detention center came in at $47 million, or something like that, and we was going to have like 17 million left over from capital projects three, of two, and I, we was going to borrow $30 million, that's always going to borrow, now we borrowing 70 million, something like that, so- So that is, we did give the voters what they voted for, the Greenway and the USCL. It just got moved ahead of time. But the voters, I don't think, is wanting us to give them double dippings in there. Just, you know, we ain't giving nothing else, no double dippings. So I don't, I don't, I, me personally, that's my opinion of where we stand with that. So I'm all for the greenways and everything that we're doing, but we have a lot of projects that we have to give money to, and we just can't be double dipping. Anybody got anything else?
Well, my only last comment is, you know, it's always better to cooperate and get along than it is to divide and conquer. And, you know, your legislative delegation has done this for you. Favors were called at the General Assembly to get this proviso done. And I'd be very careful going against the intent. Y'all, in the private meeting we had about this earlier, y'all kept saying, what was the intent? What was the intent? Now we know the intent, and now you want to talk about another reason why you don't want to do it. And that's fine. If you don't want to go along with what your delegation tried to help you do, then shame on you. That's all.
I know, but Alan, I would have- I don't think our delegation would hold this against us, Alan.
I'm not saying they wouldn't.
I really don't.
I'm just saying shame on you.
I really don't, and I think they understand common sense, and I think they understand what we intended for. Don't put that on the delegation that they're going to remember this, because remember, they're our delegation, too. We work, we work together.
Like I said, it's always better to work, it's always better, it's always better to work together.
Don't put it on the table.
It's on the table.
Mm-mm. I disagree with you on that, and I'm going to talk to the delegation about it.
Mr. Newton did agree that he should have spoken up earlier than wait till now. I understand that, but that's not, that's not what I voted-
He didn't have to speak, because it was already spoken in writing.
Might be. My intent when I voted for it was not to do double dipping. I can assure you of that.
I wish y'all would read your material.
Anything else before we move on?
No, appreciate that. As of now, we'll still move it forward-
Yes.
-to your January 9 meeting for clarity, so.
Thank y'all again very much for this year, and hope everyone has a nice, safe holiday, and we'll see y'all hopefully sometime early in '24.
But Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Fran, for what you do for us.
Actually, that meeting will be January 8. I'm sorry, January 8.
All right. Let's move on then to funding for Kershaw Pool partnership with YMCA's Dennis Marstow.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Well, I had a meeting with the mayor and town administrator of Kershaw. They have an exciting opportunity they're putting together with the Upper Palmetto YMCA. They're in talks right now to establish a partnership between the town and the YMCA to undertake Y operations in Stevens Park in the town and do programming in the community building, which has the bowling alley in Stevens Park, but also do some operations of the park pool. The town has secured initial funding to support that partnership. They have local foundations, businesses, and individuals who are helping to support that effort. Plus, the partnership would include as a standard YMCA partnership, membership dues to be a part of those activities. So the town currently has an arrangement with the county where we agree to do cost sharing for the pool expenses and even for capital. And so we put in there, so this year, we paid approximately $12,000 for last year's expenses for the pool. Over the course of the last five years, we've done $13,000. $29,000 was the highest amount that we paid in that funding relationship for pool operations. We've done down to $15,000, $18,000, and $12,000. Just to give you context of how much this partnership for the pool has been on the county side, as part of this YMCA partnership and to help get it going, the town is asking for the county's consideration to enter into a three-year commitment at $40,000 a year, so a total of $120,000 over the three years to help support this partnership and to support what we've been doing in the past for the pool maintenance. So I want to make sure that the town's request was shared with council. They are hoping to have this partnership announcement. Once they finalize it in winter-spring, they don't have an official date to announce it. They would like to know some of the council's interests or intent, so you can take action on it standalone, or you can make an initial willingness to discuss it during budget. But I wanted to make sure I brought this forward to you to see if you wanted me to bring it forward for council discussion at a business meeting or hold off on it till the budget discussions.
Well, I think it's a good idea if we hold it off to budget time. First of all, you know, I know we had an agreement with Kershaw on the pool, 50% because we were doing 50% here in Lancaster. We wanted the pools to stay open because they was in the red. So we agreed to do that. But what I don't understand is the partnership with YMCA. Do we have a partnership with YMCA here in Lancaster?
The Upper Palmetto Y is part of that system, is my understanding. So, yeah, we don't as a county, we don't as a county, but the Y of the Upper Palmetto includes the Lancaster, or the Indianland Y, the Fort Mill Y, I believe, and I'm not sure how many branches they have.
But do we fund that?
Oh, we don't.
No, we do not have a financial relationship with the YMCA.
So why, if we're going to fund the YMCA in Kershaw, don't you think they're going to be knocking on our door to fund them? I mean, to put some funds toward the YMCA here in Lancaster?
I'll give you a little history. A few years ago, when they was building the Y in Indianland, they came to us to help with the pool stuff, and we voted against it.
They did. I forgot about that.
So we didn't give Indianland any help with their YMCA.
Well, I don't think it's a stretch when they're thinking about this partnership between the town and the Y. What is it going to be for revenue and expenses? And if they were still factoring in the county, absent the YMCA, would still be a partner with them to run the pool. So I don't think it's a stretch that they're asking.
And I'm 100% with the helping with the pool, because that was an agreement we made. You help Lancaster, we help Kershaw. But to move forward another partnership with the YMCA is a whole different discussion. If we're going to do for one, we have to do for the other.
If you didn't do for one, you can't do for the other, too.
And that's what I'm saying. Are we, are we going to set precedence here, or are we going to start something we can't finish? If we're going to discuss it, let's discuss it at budget time so we can really get into the nuts and bolts of it.
Well, I would say one perspective is that it wouldn't be a relationship, I don't think, between us and the Y. It would still be a relationship between us and the town.
It'd be $40,000.
And so you could, yeah, and so we would write the agreement as it is now, as basically these gilly, unending agreement to help support the pool operations. You could look at this-
So you're saying this $40,000 would go toward the pool?
Oh, you still have to pay the pool, too.
No, 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 but-
No, this is in lieu of the pool.
In lieu, I mean, so, but the pool operations is part of the whole package for the Y. So it is a little bit muddled, but this is an opportunity for us also. We would write this agreement that we would do this if you want to so choose, and you don't have to do it at the $40,000 level. You can do it at some other level.
We can do it at the level that we're supporting the pool now.
I see, but that could be an option.
And that's what, that's what the agreement was, and I think if we're going to spend any more money, I think it should come up at budget time where we can get into the nuts and bolts of it. And you know, Indianland going to say, well, you didn't give us any money.
100%.
And you know, I, so I, you know.
I'm going to ask what the intent was.
The intent of what?
He's trying to be funny.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, just keep in mind, we all went to a celebration last night where we have contributed $400,000 to a park up in Indianland. We have a $40 million regional park that's just north of Lancaster. So I don't think that Kershaw's being unreasonable, or the lower end of the county's being unreasonable, asking for some assistance.
No, I don't think so. But as long as Pam White comes and says, hey, we want to do something similar, we'll match them, too.
And we can't, you know, say we're doing, this is a specific project, and it's, and the YMCA is not a part of the county. I'm sorry. But that pool was a part of the county. YMCA is a standalone, whatever. It's not a county function. It's community function.
And in the Bar Street renovation, when it occurred, and they came up $30,000 short-
And we voted on it.
And I supported that.
And we also supported-
And we served the least of these, we also served him.
Alan, don't bring stuff to, make comparisons here, because it's not compared. It's not apples to apples. What I'm saying is that if this is a part, if you're saying $40,000 for the pool that we agreed on, that's different. You're saying the 20-some thousand plus, give 40,000 to the YMCA as a partnership.
If you read the, if you read this thing, it says, in lieu of the, what we've been doing.
Instead of 20, we'll be doing 40.
Yes.
That's what you're saying.
That's what this is saying.
But I think that's still a budget discussion, because the agreement was, we'll do for Lancaster, that we, what we do for Kershaw. Were you on the council end? We made that agreement.
I was on the council after y'all made that agreement, and it got re-negotiated, yes.
Okay.
And I was on council.
Well, so if Lancaster Pool comes up and asks for additional money, and if we approve this, which I'm going to say again, let's talk about it at budget time.
I agree with Councilwoman McGriff. I think this is a conversation that we should probably have during the budget conversation so we can prioritize what the needs and wants are of our entire county and then handle it appropriately.
Mr. Carnes, do you have any comment?
I believe the original intent when we did this was to pay up to a certain percentage to do 50% of their maintenance. So, and I think the, the concept was, was there was 50% that we had been paying to the Lancaster Pool, and then Kershaw approached us about theirs, because it was also a similar situation where they had county children coming in using that pool. So my comments would be, whatever we end up giving to Lancaster Pool would be the same amount that we would give to Kershaw to help support their pool going forward as we're doing now. I mean, I know it's been a sort of an up and a down thing, but maybe we just need to set a, a figure, whether it's, you know, we average out the cost and it's $20,000 or it's $22,000. We just need to set that and say, we're going to support both pools at that amount.
So Brian, would you also be in support of Indianland and the YMCA and Indianland pool? Under that scenario?
I think there, we could, we could talk about that, but I think there's different structures where we're dealing with municipalities currently. And, you know, we'd have to look, see, is Kershaw still going to retain the ownership of the existing pool down there, or is that something that's going to pass to the YMCA?
My understanding is the town retains ownership.
So what, Dennis, what you say?
The town would retain ownership, which is why I'm couching this as a different agreement, but still between the county and the town.
I mean, we could always enter into a new agreement.
Well, absolutely, yeah. Any more discussion?
Well, I do believe this request probably has surfaced because they're trying to get their commitments to attract the Y to come to Kershaw. So, you know, we wait till budget time. We're not going to really help them with the attracting the Y to, you know, they're raising all kind of money through different foundations and things of that nature, but...
Was it a timeframe, Dennis, that?
Well, to Mr. Blackman's point, yes. They did want to ask now, because they are trying to solidify this partnership and understand what the revenue expenses will be and where's the county in that. And then how does their pool arrangement work between the Y, them, and if we maintain our agreement?
But our agreement would go way under this scenario, because we're going to pay $40,000 a year, and, but we won't pay the 12, so we're paying an extra 28 a year, and there's, there's no, that, if we pay 50% of the maintenance costs, those costs are probably going to go up over the years.
Are we saying to cut it off at 40?
Yeah, my intent, if you all want to go into a funding relationship, yes, we would not, we would replace a new agreement than what we have now for the town pool at the half expenses, which was, what did I say?
I think, I think-
$12,000 this year.
Before we make a decision, I would want to see the agreement and see whether we're committing to something and our intent, and please understand what we're doing. But I don't think, you know, it'll be, we'd be ready to vote on it right away.
Okay, well, I can, I'll certainly talk to the town and see if they want to put together a draft agreement so we'll have either final information for you to act on as part of the budget or beforehand, but we can have some negotiations if you want, just to make sure there's clarity. But no, I think their intent is they want to come to you now, because they are trying to put this partnership together and want to understand what it would mean for revenues and expenses for their partnership.
We just need to know where this $40,000 is going to. What does this happen do? I mean, with the YMCA coming in, they're charging memberships and stuff, and they're getting money through that. And also, what is the $40,000? I know part of it's going to be the pool, but we've already done, but what is the other 28,000? What is it going to be used for? I mean...
Well, that would probably be the pool itself, but they're trying to find funding sources that makes it attractive to the YMCA to come to Kershaw without, without commitments, without money raising to help pay for operating costs of the whole facility. You know, they're trying to partner with the YMCA to raise money, just like we did there at the Nesbit property, bringing all these different people to task, to be able to buy that property. And it's not necessarily buying the pool at this point, it's just to help raise money so the YMCA can move forward and know that it's got capital to pay bills and things of that nature.
And it's a five-year commitment, you-
It's a three-year commitment, which is why I can understand the 40,000 request so that they could also use it for the operating, but make some capital investments over the three years, knowing that our money, quote unquote, is directed towards the pool. And so you can imagine in three years, there will be some capital expenses, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Now, I mean, our, our monies that were going to the pool in Kershaw were going to ensure that county children got to go to the pool and use the pool. If the YMCA is going to be charging families whose children were using the pool, then, you know, I think we're talking a totally different thing here. You know, if the intent is to allow those children to still use the pool for free, or whatever charge that this town in Kershaw was charging at that point, then, you know, I would support it. But I'd have to question if there's going to be, they're going to be charged to use the pool and get county money to help support that.
You know, we did talk about, you know, allowing, we wanted them to keep the rate down where the kids could afford to get in. That was one reason why we agreed to the 50%, because kids who, parents with three and four children couldn't afford to pay for all of them. So our agreement was to keep the cost down for the kids as much as possible. But, you know, with the YMCA coming in there, would it be a, a membership fee, or are they going to open it up for the kids and still allow the kids in the, in the area to, to use the pool?
It's a membership, because the university up here, theirs is, you know, YMCA. I'm sure anyone-
I think we got a lot to think about and discuss.
YMCA is making this a little complicated, because we have all our YMCA's in the county that are not supported by the county.
You got what you need, Mr. Blackman?
I got what I need, and if the town wants to come back, they can, but I'll let them know that we'll add this to our budget discussion.
All right. All right, we moving right along here to general discussion regarding grants for boards and commissions. Mr. Marstow.
Mr. Secretary and council members, this is just a general discussion or just a quick feedback request for you. Back in spring of 2023, we had information that we provided to you, that we have one board that has the official ability within their ordinance to apply for grants. It's stated in their ordinance. And over time, other boards and commissions have inquired about applying for grants or even undertaking specific fundraising activities on behalf of the county-established board or committee. And so we have not, there's been no direct-
And so we have not, there's been no direct authority to do either activity in their creating ordinances. But again, we were presented with another request in the past month for a board or commission wanted to seek a $5,000 grant with no matching funds to do marketing promotions to support their activities. Now we're seeing more of these requests and there's been another request about doing some type of fundraising activity. So I'd like to hear, staff has been saying there's no ability in your creating ordinance to do that, so we've been discouraging that. But I wanted to make sure you all heard that these requests have been coming forward in kind of different shapes and forms. Practically, if we do get grant submissions on behalf of a committee or board, it still has to go through our audit process and still runs through our books and has some staff demands from our finance team to administer these, although they may be small, but I just don't want to diminish that level of finance involvement. So just wanted to get another check in with you all, and I don't know if the attorney has anything to add, but just want to get a little check in if you've heard of these requests from any of the boards or commission members or if you have any initial thoughts about allowing them in creation ordinances.
Oh, no. The only concern I had when I read this was accountability. And if the county is going to manage the grant, I don't see a problem with it because if they're able to do it and they go through the county, it will be managed properly. If not through the county, I don't think so.
And I do, I think we've had a small conversation before about the role of a grants manager or grants function within the county structure. That may come up again as we talk about budget, during the budget process. But I agree with you that we would want more oversight or have some understanding of how these are being managed.
I've got a couple of comments. I think if anything comes up, if we do allow them, it still needs to come to council for us to prove it, that it's something that we think it's good for the county or good for them or whatever. But also the matching funds part of it, if they come in here with something on 50%, we don't have the funds to do it. I mean, we're going to have to be careful there with the matching funds part of it. If they can go out and get something, get 100%, I'm all for it. Like Ms. McGriff said, you know, they, if they can go out and get free money and it's and it falls under the county's guidelines, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it as long as there's accountability that the grant is actually used for what the grant said it was going to be used for and that's tracked and recorded and all of that.
But you know, every time they put in for a grant, it's got to come before the council in order for them to move forward. So we'll know ahead of time whether it's with the matching funds and things like that, so we can approve it or not approve. It's just that in order to complete it, I think it needs to go through the county.
Anybody got anything else?
And then is there any other different feeling about committee members doing fundraising, asking corporations, businesses, entities?
That's the problem. We can't keep a handle on that.
Yeah.
Because money is out there being requested and maybe not being swept properly.
Or it's being given for political reasons.
Yeah. We may not want to do that. We might want to keep it to grant, you know, grant funding.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right, anybody else got any questions? Brian, Mr. Carnes, do you have any?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move on into our next discussion. Follow-up discussion on the number of times a partial can be subdivided. Ms. Harden?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, I wanted to start out with a little bit of a quick review about subdivision because we've had this question before and the public often gets confused with what a subdivision is. A subdivision, the act of subdividing, is to take a piece of property and put it into two or more pieces of property. So you change the structure of it. A subdivision isn't limited to neighborhoods. Subdivision isn't limited to Indianland. Subdivision can go on anywhere in the county and it can be as small as taking your personal residential unit and cutting a piece off for your child or it can be as much as several hundred acres going into a multi-phase development. There's two definitions that we look at. The ones that are on the screen, the top one is with our UDO. The bottom one is the state law. You'll see that the one in the state law has a little bit more detail to help you understand where we derived our definition from. The area, the words in blue are referenced in both state and local code. So our local definition is very much like the state definition with the state definition having a little bit more detail as you go into when a subdivision can be done as a re-subdivision. Say you've subdivided the property already, can you re-subdivide it? We follow both of these because the state law, we're not able to preempt and excuse ourselves from state law, so we do follow both of them. But the subdivision definition in our UDO is a little bit more succinct. In this proposal, when you go to subdivisions, the state law provides for some exemptions of properties from subdivision. And then like most of the counties in the state, we have a minor and a major subdivision process. There's different review processes for those two. Let's start out though with what's an exempt subdivision. So what do you not have to go through the planning commission for? What do you not have to worry about what staff might or might not say about your property division? Those are ones that are specifically listed in state law and the code we have right here is on the screen is the state law itself. The combination or recombination of portions of previously platted lots. Let's say you've got two properties side by side and you want to make it one. You can come to us with a plat that says, I want to take this line out of the middle and no problem, we'll sign off to let you record that at the register of deeds and they'll help you with information about, they and the assessors will help you with how to work your deed language to go with the plat. A division of land into parcels of five acres or more where no new street is involved, that is similar to what you can do with a large development where you've got several tracts that you're trying to subdivide first to get several acres in. But the bottom line is that those are much larger lots. If you don't have a road involved, that means that there's no infrastructure that goes along with that. There's no water line along that. There's no sewer line. There's no pavement, so no need for staff to review that. That goes into a different review, a quick review there. And then entire lots of record where there's no street change, no existing change in or change in existing streets involved for combining it or recombining properties, also not something that we go through over a large process with. In our UDO, we actually have another option, which is the lineal descendants. That's taken from another section of state code. So if you have an estate that has to be subdivided out after the will has been probated or the probate court has given us instructions, as long as there is no indication of development or building permit pending, we will give you that application as well. The one caveat that we have on there is that any new lot created under a statutory exemption must still have minimum road frontage of 25 feet or be accessible by a 25-feet easement. So you still have to have access. Part of the reason that we review subdivisions of property at all is because when you buy a piece of property or when you give a piece of property to your family, they have to have the ability to access it. And there's some basic understandings that when you're giving property or selling property or conveying property that apply. And we as the body that records these deeds and structures for your property, we've got to make sure that that's there. First thing is you've got to be able to get to it. The second thing is that you've got to be able to use it in some way, shape, or form. Getting to it and using it involves things like access, water and sewer lines, and the ability to use it if, in case there is like very large slopes or it's full of wetlands and it's very swampy, we'll have conversations with you about that to help you with that. Exempt plats, they're still reviewed to confirm the correct information, even though you've got the ability to not have to follow, but a handful of small checkpoints, we're still going to review the plat to make sure that the plat comes in with the correct information because we're all human, we all make mistakes and there's more eyes on it's going to get it right. This is a recorded document. This is something that can be used in a chain of title down the line. This is something that can be used for research. So if we allow something to be recorded with incorrect information on it, then that can create a snowball down the line of incorrect information being referenced in future times. So we make sure that it's, we check that out. And we also check to make sure that they have the access points. So even if it's an exempt plant, the plat, the example on the screen is one where it was more than 50 acres and all of the lots in there are more than 10 acres each. So that is not something that has to go through a very specific review. It is something that we check the information, check to make sure they have the access and then stamp and go on. With a minor subdivision, this is where you start getting into, we are going to check and make sure that everything follows a different path. So a minor subdivision is a subdivision of property into five lots or less where there is, doesn't require a dedicated street. So let's say you have a piece of property that has three frontages already on it. Let's say you own a part of a block on a main street and it's got two side streets on it. If you don't have to create another street, then you can subdivide that property up to five times without having to go through a full major review. You don't have to increase the number of lots. If you have, if you're in a subdivision that has already been approved by the county, let's say that someone in Sun City, which is an approved subdivision, has a very large tract of their land and they want to subdivide it into five lots, that subdivision has been put out on the ground, it's been recorded, it's been developed, the common spaces have been declared, they couldn't do it under that. Right, it's the number of times, not the acreage. The acreage falls into the exemption. Now, we go into a minor subdivision if your lots are anything smaller than five acres. If you're creating any lot smaller than five acres, we start out with a major, a minor subdivision to see if it meets that criteria. Even if you have one lot smaller than five acres, when you get above and beyond five lots or more, we go into the major subdivision, which I'll go into in a minute. So we also, it doesn't require any conditions that require additional approval, it doesn't increase the number of lots in a subdivision that's already been approved. Those are minor subdivisions.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? So if you go to an exempt subdivision, so in existing platted subdivision, somebody buys, let's say 10 lots. Let's say five.
Okay.
That they can do, they combine it, it's now one total lot. That's 10 or fewer acres. They want to divide those 10 or those 10 or fewer acres now back into the original five lots.
Exempt. Under the re-subdivision.
So they've combined it under the exempt, but if they want to subdivide it back, it's still exempt?
That is an example of one of those very thin lines. If they wanted to divide, if they had five, they combined them into one lot and they want to go back out to the original five, those original five have already been approved.
So it falls into the minor?
Falls under the exempt plat that I have to go ahead and give them the approval of that, if it matches exactly what it was.
Okay.
If they change it in any way, we're going on to the minor plat review.
Okay.
And if they want to go to four instead of five, we're going to minor plat review.
Gotcha.
If they want to go to six, we're on with the major.
Because it's more than what they've had before. Gotcha.
Yes. Yes, and it's, that's informal subdivisions. There are properties out in the county where there have been informal, you know, this is going to my kids or this, I'm selling this property to my uncle or that. That's not recognized as a full-on formal approved subdivision.
Okay.
The formal approved subdivision type is the one that's been gone, that went through the planning commission, has been approved for record and is being sold.
How do you define access?
Access is 25 feet to a road.
Even if it's exempt and you're putting your all?
It is only exempt if it has access. If you don't have access, but it's, let's say you have a piece of property that's 10 acres and you have access to one road. Let's say you have 10 acres on Van Wijk Road, okay? And you want to cut a hole in the middle like a donut. And those 10 acres that you have and you want to put a five-acre donut in the middle that doesn't touch the roadway, there, we get into a technicality. Technically, a five-acre subdivision is exempt. However, you can't get to it from here without crossing somebody else's property. You have to have access to that road that the public has access to or that you have prescribed access to by an easement.
But you tell me, it has to be 25 feet?
At least 25 feet wide. Yes, sir.
Does, can it just be dirt or does it have gravel or does it have, what's the criteria?
Well, it used to be have to be paved unless you're in the AR zone, which we made the change a couple of months ago, in which case there can be gravel used. Do you remember the exemption or the text amendment we did a few months ago that allowed for subdivision off of a gravel road in the rural zones?
I remember all that.
Yes, sir. And again, the whole point of that is access. The property owner doesn't, isn't the only one that needs access. Emergency services need access as well because we're serving.
But if there's nothing on those lots, I mean, it's just a vacant lot and the guy wants to...
Yeah, if it's just a vacant lot, he wants to sell it. You've got to be able to get to it legally and completely. You know, we can't, it's not something where you can say, oh, I'm just going to jump this fence and cross over Mr. Smith's field because the bull might make it first. The access to your property that you propose or that you want to buy has to be by a legal form. It's either by public road, private road, or prescribed easement. And there are limitations on the prescribed easement as well. And we'll talk about that in a little bit, too. That's where we got into some trouble years and years ago and that's part of the reason we have these rules now. So for a minor subdivision, we have to check this out. The example on your screen is one like I talked to you about that had multiple street access points. And this is proposed as a minor subdivision. And typically, I would have signed off on this. However, the only access to sewer for this subdivision is coming off the street that is parallel to the bottom of the map. And in order to get sewer to the properties that are proposed at the top, I have to go through private property. So because of the infrastructure needs to go through that area with an easement, I had to put a hold on this one and say we're going to have to get Lancaster Water and Sewer involved and this may go up to the level of major subdivision review because of infrastructure changes.
Septic's not an option?
Not in this particular area where they have it. Plus, you have to have the right size lot for septic. Septic lots require at least an acre and sometimes have wider subdivision or wider lot requirements because you've got to have the space for the septic field to be served under DEHEC rules. So you can't have small lots if you're doing septic. If you're doing lots this size, this is going to be served by sewer. In addition, there is sewer already in that area running along that road and the connection goes there. For public health, while septic is an option, septic tanks are an option, septic systems are a little more sanitary and so we go with the higher level there.
Some of us don't, some of us don't have any choice.
No, I get it. I've lived in both places. I've lived on the pipe and in the field. I understand.
These lots, or at least an acre in criteria for septic tank, they're good to go to subdivide.
They could be good to go for subdivision. It also depends on water as well. If they're on well and they've got enough space for septic and they've got access to the lots, then it's good to go. And all of that is allowed under the zoning because I've got to make sure that it meets the setbacks as well and the minimum lot size and a couple of other things. So one of the things that's happened in communities across the state is that when you have regulations that say you have to go that say you have to go into a major subdivision review if you're creating a street, if they've got a street that they're up against, then they're like, "Well, I don't have to do that. I don't have to create a street, so I'm just going to start subdividing down the street." This is what happened in the past, where in order to skirt the major subdivision review process, they would put in four lots, and then go up the road and put in four more lots, and then go up the road and put in four more lots. Which is why we got to the provision where we actually go back to 1991 to see if your property has been subdivided five times since that time, in a manner of less than the five-acre type. This is what we're trying to avoid with those, with the regulations that we have on hand, because what this does is create a whole bunch of driveway cuts on roads that might have been, or that may be collector roads, maybe roads that weren't intended to hold that. And there was no upgrade to the, to the infrastructure at that time. So we're trying very hard to make sure that when the subdivisions are put in place, that the people that buy the land there have solid legal access, good access, and access to infrastructure in an orderly fashion. Any questions about minor subdivision? And I know I'm going through this kind of fast, I know, I don't want to have to take y'all past around the 6 o'clock. Major subdivision is different. Once you get above five lots, or if you're involving a street creation, then you're into the major subdivision review. And part of the reason that folks don't like the major subdivision review is because of the amount of work that it takes upfront, and the amount of work it takes from our staff to review it. When you're in the major subdivision review, you're going to have to put in where you're going to add your road, your curb and gutter, your stormwater, if it's in the stormwater division review area, your sidewalks, your street trees, your paved streets, your internal road systems have regulations. If you have a certain number of traffic impacts, you're going to have to have a traffic impact analysis. This is just the beginning of the things that we talk about with a major subdivision. So you can see why, if you're doing 10 lots, you might want to try and avoid that. And I can understand that. However, we have a responsibility to the people that are buying the land after it's been subdivided, and that's what we always look at. We always look at the next person that owns it. I understand what you want to do here, but the next person that owns it. We do that same, same looking with rezonings, same looking with changing your comp plan process with text amendments, what's the next thing that can happen? Because we've got to take care of those folks as well. And to really boggle your mind, that's actually a page out of our code. That is the flow chart for review for subdivision. The minor subdivision's on the left, and it stops about two-thirds of the way down the page. The full thing is a major subdivision review. All those steps are outlined in Section 9 of our UDO. If you ever need something to do and have nothing else to do, you're absolutely welcome to look up that chapter and see all the process that we go through. Minor subdivision is much easier to review. Right before I came here, I was doing some on my laptop, because there's a lot less to check for. But a major subdivision is, it really takes a village to put that together. It takes the eyes of many different staff members. We meet at a technical review committee, we meet with the Water and Sewer Division, we meet with representatives from SC DOT, we meet in all the internal departments that would have a review on that, they come together. There's a lot more pages involved, because you also get civil plans. So it's a much, much more protracted timeframe, but you get a bigger and better product.
So is it full, I see there you've got full TRC and planning commission, so is the full TRC complete before it goes to the planning commission?
Not always. Now, the TRC comments that go forward, if there are some significant comments that the staff feels is not achievable within a certain amount of time, they will recommend denial, or they'll say not approved on a subdivision. And they give all of their reasons why. Now, there are some times where it's not approved, but it's not something that is a, that is not something that's insurmountable in 60 days. And one example of that could be that we received the traffic impact analysis, our engineers and your engineers have agreed upon what to do, but we haven't received the final revisions. So the actual piece of paper isn't here, but we have all agreed on what's going to be on that piece of paper. So the person that is reviewing that would technically say, "This is not, this objective hasn't been met yet, but we feel certain that it can be done in the next 60 days." They'll send that with, to comments for the planning staff, the planning staff would send that on to planning commission, saying, "Technically, it's not finished, but we feel like it would be in 60 days." And then the planning commission has the opportunity to either give it a conditional review, saying, "Okay, these sections you meet within 60 days, or our approval is invalid." And they can move forward. That way, we are not holding up development month after month on a paperwork trail where the staff can check that off. But if it is something significant, the staff won't let, won't recommend approval at all. We do have a 60-day window in the state law that we have to review a subdivision by, or else it is considered approved automatically. So if we have 60 days, and we're running up against that 60-day window, staff will turn it into the planning commission, say, "We can't approve it, and here's why." And then the planning commission has the opportunity to discuss that with the developer.
And those go to the planning commission, but they don't come to council?
Correct. The state law stops subdivision review at the planning commission level. The only two things that planning commission get that you don't, subdivisions and street names.
Anybody got any questions? Councilman Carnes, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Nothing else you have, is that all you have, Ms. Harden? Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good, just not 6 o'clock yet.
And I would like to highlight that Ms. Harden, Ms. Harden just completed her six months with the county, so her depth of knowledge is very much appreciated.
That's right. All right, we'll move into our budget calendar discussion. Mr. Marsdell?
Should be the last page on your materials, as we have the draft budget calendar for fiscal year 2425. And based upon some of my prior conversations with council about how you want to receive some information in this year's budget process, I want to call your attention that we do have two workshops identified for department presentations, again, on April 10th and on April 17th. You will see as part of this budget calendar that we do have more Wednesday meetings, the 10th, 17th. And then, what we've done differently this year for you, based upon our comments earlier, is that we have the administrator's recommended budget on May 8th. On May 15th, these are both Wednesdays, May 15th, we'll have, we've added in a council budget review, and then we go to first reading on May 28th. And to highlight that, May 28th is the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So just so you have that heads up, it's not a Monday night. So I think, based upon your feedback, that we're addressing your needs, that you've expressed to me about more budget information, having some more of the detailed department information, but again, maintaining that you'll hear from every department director with their budget requests for those two sessions. And then we've got a full time for you to digest the administrator's recommended budget for at least that initial week. We can ask budgets go through things at that budget review on the 15th, and then that will give you, what, another 13 days to digest before we get to first budget reading. So I just wanted to check in if that seems to address some of your needs, to make sure you're getting complete budget information as we go through this process.
Sounds good. Anybody got any questions?
Just for clarification, so these are going to include the full Excel spreadsheets and every line item for each of the departments when they're presenting, or at least have it as part of our materials so that we can review?
Yes. So you will see their details, but when they do their budget presentations, just for time, we will have formatted PowerPoint slides. But yes, you will have access to their request.
Will those PowerPoint slides refer to the line item in the Excel so that we can track exactly where things are coming from and where they're going to?
Well, we'll break down, like we did previously, we'll break down the departmental presentations by personnel operating capital. So I think you can track that way, but a lot of it will be more about position requests. So you would see that in the salary line item. So I think that we can make that connection for you. But yeah, their presentations, just for clarity and expediency, will have those three budget categories of personnel operating. And just to highlight some of their requests, so you will hear, if they're asking for new positions, you'll hear some of their major operating changes, whether they want new software, new equipment, whatever it may be, and then even if that goes into the capital. And I will say to council, I've also heard that when we do our discussion with department directors, we will also ask them to identify some things that they may cut. So we will also make sure that that is in their vernacular as well.
Okay.
I have heard, I have heard from you.
Anybody else got any comment? Councilman Carnes, you have any comment?
I do not. Thanks, sir.
All right, that's everything. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second, Councilman Carnes. Everybody in favor, raise your hand.
We got to do a roll.
Roll call, I'm sorry. Yeah, roll, because it's been...
I approve.
Terry Graham.
I approve.
Charlie McGriff.
Approved.
Billy Mosteller.
Approved.
Jose Luis.
Approved.
Alan Blackman.
Approved.
Brian Carnes.
Agreed.
As unanimous approval, this meeting is closed. Thank you. Thank you.